All right, so good afternoon, everyone. I'm glad to call the meeting to order, Virtual Planning Commission meeting of June 4th, 2020. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence all the talking devices and mute your microphones, your dogs, or anything that's making noise. And so then at this time, I'd like to stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk? Hey, Michael. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Michael Cox.
Here.
Peter Hansel. Peter Hansel.
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roberto Size.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Chris Williams. I'm sorry, is Chris Williams here?
Yes. He's here. Yeah.
Chairman Charles Gray.
I'm here.
Okay, you want to read the proof of publication? Madam Clerk? Proof of publication.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on May 24th, 2020, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings. If the members who are not speaking, would you please mute your microphones because we could kind of hear like shuffling of paper and things like that? Thank you.
All right, thank you Denise. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody. The planning commission serves as a local planning agency and the planning commission holds public hearings, transmits to the board of county commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings and conditional use requests. The planning commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the board of county commissioners. Anyone that is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use of any item where the planning commission transmits a recommendation to the board of county commissioners is important for you to attend the appropriate board of county commission meeting. And I think we have some minutes to approve. Do I hear a motion to approve minutes? We need to approve them en masse or individually?
Can you do it in mass if you want?
Mr. Chairman, this is Michael Cox. I will approve in mass.
In mass, okay.
Deoseph, Robert, and Sa- Sa second.
Okay, and Roberto, second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jamie Girardi. Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Size.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye. All right, thank you. So first, if there is any, we'll take public comment for items not on the agenda for callers that have pre-registered or currently on queue. And then after we read into the public, read into the record, public comments, documents, PowerPoints, videos that have been identified by members of the public to be read out loud or played at the meeting for items not on the agenda, not to exceed three minutes. Ms. Fernandez and Denise, do we have anybody that's pre-registered?
We do not have anyone that's pre-registered to speak at this time during the regular public comment. We do have someone registered to speak on item PC4 who's waiting in queue. And when that item comes up, it'll be pulled from consent. When that item comes up, we'll have that person speak and provide that person three minutes.
Okay, great. So these are the public hearing procedures. Both the phone call and WebEx participants, including the applicants who have pre-registered for the virtual planning commission meeting, will be notified by the county staff when they will be permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved, which hasn't been. Callers and WebEx participants must announce the following items before speaking. At the time, they'll be sworn by the clerk. They must announce their name, their address, their agenda item number, and their agenda title. So as you come on, that's what will be needed for me. And you'll also be sworn in. Then you will receive either three or five minutes. Sorry, the phone monitor rules. Okay, so we were going to begin the public hearing. Today, we have six public hearing items on the consent agenda and these items will be approved. I roll call vote unless the item is pulled from consent. Once a motion is made on the consent agenda, the planning commission member who makes the motion will state his name, the planning commission member who seconded the motion will state his name, and the clerk will call the roll. So Denise, want to start with PC1?
Did we read the proof on the items? We did, okay, perfect. All right. PC1 is PDD 202083. It's a zoning variance in the name of HB Rubicon LLC for a reduction in the required minimum front setback from 25 feet to 10 feet in a C2 general commercial district to with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
All right, is there an applicant on the phone?
Um, the applicant, I'm not sure if the applicant is virtually present. I do not see that the applicant is virtually present.
So this is Michael Cox. I have a question on that particular item.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, probably take care of it real quick. Actually, two questions. So the memo statement, the system is in review by the county. My question is that if it doesn't get approved or they withdraw for some reason, will this variance stand with that piece of property or is it specific only to this project?
The variance would remain with the land.
Okay, so the, so looking at the site plan, it looks, it's only encroaching in on that in just a couple areas.
That's correct.
Right. So is there anything that we can put into this that would make this so it's only with the, with this particular project?
Yes.
The answer is yes, you can.
Sorry.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe, Michael, maybe we should pull this one then so we can take care of it, okay?
Yep, sorry about that.
All right.
And our applicants are virtually present, by the way. I'm sorry, we are getting some notices that our applicants are virtually present.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll pull, we'll pull that one and discuss it later.
Yeah, pull that one. We'll come back, okay?
All right, so following item is PC2, PDD 20 CU 28. It's a conditional use for Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, Inc., for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, on-premises consumption and package sales in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant in a C2 general commercial district, with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
All right, and is the applicant virtually present?
Yes, our applicant is virtually present.
Okay. All right, would they like to make a presentation? Or do they want to withhold questions or questions?
It's a consent item, so we typically don't do a presentation, but as you wish.
Well, I didn't know since it's the format where offering an opportunity to speak. I just, they want to leave on a consent, they're not going to speak, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. If anybody on the board have a question? All right, we move to the next one.
Item, PDD 20 CU 29, in the name of PSM South Branch LLC, Publix, The Preserve Marketplace, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, only on-premises consumption and package sales in conjunction with the operation of a marketplace in a master plan unit development district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
All right.
And our applicants are virtually present.
Nobody is registered to object?
No.
All right, and I think you said PC4. We need to, is that going to be called?
That item is pulled, there is a, there is a person on the phone to speak on that item.
All right, so let's go to PC5.
We'll move on to PC5, PDD 20 7480, in the name of Jonathan Ash. This is for a change in zoning from C2 general commercial district to an R3 medium density residential district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, and yeah, applicant virtually present.
Our applicant is virtually present.
Is anybody registered to speak otherwise?
No.
Anybody on the board have a question about it? All right, the next one.
PDD 20 7482, and that's PC6, in the name of, names of Daniel J. and Bonita G. Jones and Richard Mark. It's for a change in zoning from AC agricultural district to C2 general commercial district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, and the applicant is virtually present?
Yes.
Okay, and no one registered to object?
No.
All right. Okay, so do I have a motion on the consent agenda that wants to remain?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, Chris Poole, to approve PC2, PC3, PC5, and PC6.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Roberto, any further discussion?
No, 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 no.
Okay. All right. There's no further discussion, then all in favor, signify by a roll call vote.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Size.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye. Now we'll go back and revisit the ones that we polled.
Okay, item PC1, let's have the, we're going to have the applicants promoted so that they can answer any questions.
Okay.
Hi folks, this is Gil Livingstone. I am the architect for the project online. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay, Michael, I think you had the questions initially about it. You want to, want to start it off?
Yeah, I, you know, the site plan, I realize it doesn't really encourage too much only in a couple corners of the project. But my concern is if it doesn't get built, then that variance will be permanent for that piece of property.
Well, we've already got the private providers' full approval. The only thing we're waiting on building is the fire marshal. And obviously, just we've got to get through this so that we can get our site approved.
Let's, let's have him sworn in prior. I apologize. Let's swear you in. Just state your name and your address for the record, and then the clerk will swear you in. Sorry about that.
No worries. My name is Gil Livingstone. My address is 2901 West Bush Boulevard, Suite 204, Tampa, Florida, 34638. No, 33618, excuse me.
Okay.
The clerk will now swear you in.
Yeah. Raise your right hand, please.
I can't, I'll raise my left.
No, no, I gotta raise your right.
My right's kind of stuck right now.
Yeah, I'm just teasing. That's okay, go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Is the truth so help you God?
I do.
All right, great. Okay, well, I think what Michael is suggesting would not impede what you want to do. It's going to approve, you would be approved, it would only be if you didn't go forward with your.
And that's no problem. I mean, if, if you want to put something in the approval saying, hey, if the owner decides not to build, this variance is no longer in effect, I would say, go for it. It's not going to make a difference to us because we're all ready to build, we're just waiting on this to get through.
Right. What do you think, Michael?
I mean, that's fine with me. David, how do we make that happen?
You would add a condition that says that this approval does not run with the land and shall expire if the assisted living facility is not constructed.
Okay.
Denise has, Denise has language she used in the past, similar language she used in the past.
Okay. So I saw also that it was approved for up to 381 units. How many units are you going to be putting in there?
Maximum of 240 people. That's 120 units.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay, all right.
The person on the phone.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm, I'm fine with the project, I just want to add that condition.
All right. Anybody, anybody else on the board have a comment on this one? Or question? All right. Is there somebody on the phone else, Denise?
No, not on this one, it's on PC4.
Okay. All right, well, if not, then, Michael, why don't you make a motion toward what you wanted to do?
Sure. So, Michael Cox, I will move for approval of this, adding the condition that this variance runs with the land and applies only to this project to allow Denise to add that language.
I think you meant it does not run with the land.
Not run with the land.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, a second?
Second, Chris Williams.
Okay, Chris Williams, second. All in favor?
Aye.
My roll call vote?
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Size.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
All right.
Was that an aye for you, Chairman Gray?
Pardon me?
Mr. Chairman, we didn't hear your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, good, thank you very much, appreciate it. That's a lot with your arm there.
Thanks.
You know, stay out of the bars, I see that can behind. Oh, that's a Coke, I'm sorry. Okay.
So Christina Costa is going to take over this one.
Who is?
Thank you Denise for sharing the screen for me.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Item PC4 is PDD 20-7477. It's in the name of FAM LLC/Moon Lake Acres. It is for a rezoning from ER Estate Residential District to MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District. The property is located on the west side of Moon Lake Road, approximately 1.25 miles south of State Road 52. The zoning amendment is from ER Estate Residential to MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District in order to develop the site with a maximum of 162 single-family attached townhomes. The surrounding area is characterized by single-family and multiple-family uses. The subject site is an expired portion of the Baywood Meadows Forest Point PUD Planned Unit Development, but on August 9th, 2005, the PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District was repealed through ordinance 05-32. In accordance with our Land Development Code, a PUD that expires shall cause the property to revert to the zoning district that existed prior to the zoning of the PUD. So the subject parcel had a previous zoning of ER, and that is what we're rezoning today. The expired PUD included entitlements for a mix of multifamily, attached single-family, and detached single-family dwellings. Here's a look at the zoning, the current zoning and the surrounding zoning of the area. And the future land use is Res 6 for the site. And access is off of Moon Lake Road. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval from PDD, and I'm here for any questions you have.
Okay. How many acres is that?
So altogether, the site is just over 45 acres.
All right. Okay, any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got a question on Chris Poole.
Okay, go ahead.
So mine is regarding traffic. I drove this site this morning in a pretty, pretty driving rain, rainstorm, and I see in the timing phasing analysis that they are proposing a left turn in northbound. My question, is that going to be signalized or not? Or is that going to be determined?
No.
So access to the site is determined at the site plan point? Perhaps the applicant aligned to, and she has her, her traffic consultant, and maybe they can answer the question of the future intention for development.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, this is site availability.
This is Barbara Willhite, can you hear me?
Yes. Barbara, hey Barbara.
Hi, planning commission members, how are you?
Good.
So, Mr. Poole, the, the answer is that we did a preliminary active management analysis with our timing and phasing analysis, and it did call for the need for, as you mentioned, that left turn lane, 455 feet northbound left turn lane. It's only a preliminary analysis, that site plan, the active management will be formally reviewed.
Okay. Yeah, I just want, I just want to go on record because that's a very high, high velocity area, I guess if you want to call it, and it's a pretty sharp turn coming around there. So I think from a safety perspective, that's, that's something I wanted to add, and I also seen the timing phasing analysis, there's no sort of deceleration lane or anything coming south to turn right. Is that, is that correct? Or is that, that's to be determined as well?
Yeah, that's per the analysis that we submitted. As I, as I stated, that was a preliminary analysis. The staff, in the staff report, has a finding that says that they're going to review active management at the site plan as well, so.
Okay.
Barbara, let's, let's get you sworn in first. State your name and your address for the record, and then the clerk will swear you.
Getting fall out of order, 6327 Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport 2 Florida, 34652.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give? Is the truth so help you God?
I do.
Also on this item, I want to mention, we do have a caller that is waiting in the queue, so would you like to have that person speak?
Yes, we would just defer and just see what the concerns may be, and then we can, I have a team on, on WebEx as well, so let's go ahead and defer and see what the caller neighbor has to say, and then we can address any questions.
All right, that sounds good. All right, Denise, do you want to bring in the caller?
Yeah, we'll bring in the caller.
Essam Khalil, is that the name?
Caller, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Dana Setterman, S-E-T-T-E-R-M-A-N. I live at 11316 Laurel Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida.
And the clerk will now swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Is the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, your three minutes start now. Thank you, Ms. Setterman.
Okay, yeah, I'm calling on the Moon Lake Acres Agenda PC4. And my concerns are the Moon Lake Road safety. It's actually very, very busy road already. Water's Edge has townhomes being added, River Ridge had some added recently, and Rose Haven is being developed at this time. And my daughter does sub, and she said the school, there's 20, 25 kids per classroom, and there's a lot of outbuildings already in this area. I also work on the school system, and I know there's a lot of special needs kids who aren't getting the services that they need or the special attention they need because of the large class sizes. I'm, and that's with the schools alone. The safety on Moon Lake Road is, is bad. I live on a cross street, and it's very difficult for me to pull onto my street, Coronado Way, which is just up the street from where they want to build the townhomes. We're always afraid someone's going to back, hit us from the back when they're trying to turn in from either direction, because people are going so fast, they're like pushing up. We blinker early, but it doesn't matter, we're still really scared. We, there's a turn lane into Baywood Meadows, but that's, we don't have one near Coronado Way. And people will pass us on the right just to, and not, and it's very aggressive, I guess, to put it that way, the traffic on Moon Lake is very aggressive traffic. Let's see, there's been a number of accidents and deaths on Moon Lake Road. I'm concerned about the environmental impact with declaring and things like that. So those are my biggest concerns, and also the poor notice to the public with the signs. I understand they place it at the county buildings and they put it in the newspapers, but the signs were very small. They were placed on a curve and parallel with traffic, which wasn't really good sign notice for the people out here. I think that's really about it. I don't know how long three minutes is.
You have about 30 or so more seconds.
Pardon me?
You have 30 seconds.
I have 30 seconds. Yeah, so I'm just hoping that these concerns be addressed and, and just respect the environment out here, but I'm just really worried about the traffic on Moon Lake as with everyone else that is out here. We're all worried about the more traffic on Moon Lake Road, which it can't take. So, there you go, those are my concerns in three minutes.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that. We'll see if we can get you some answers. There were some questions about the school. Chris, do you have anything, any questions you have about that?
Sure, I can talk about that. Barbara, can you remind me of the number of townhomes that are proposed for here?
162. Generate 13 elementary school students, six middle school students, and eight high school students.
Okay, so as far from a capacity standpoint, these students would go to Moon Lake Elementary. You probably have it in front of you too, Barbara. But Moon Lake Elementary is a little bit under capacity. River Ridge Middle is a little bit over, but with the Starkey K8 that we're opening in a year from now, we would expect River Ridge to be relieved of their overcrowding. And then also River Ridge High School is currently under capacity. So with that few of a number of students being generated, we don't, I don't have concerns with providing capacity for this particular project.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Anybody else on the board have questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I, and if I may add, as far as class size, you know, obviously we have the class size amendment that we have to comply with, and that's usually on a, on a per-school average.
and that's, um, usually on a, on a per-school average basis, so, um, you know, if, if more students come, then, um, we're obligated to hire more teachers to, um, meet, uh, the class size average across the school.
That's a concern, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying that that, that we're mandated by law to, to do that, so, so let's say another thirteen students show up at Moon Lake Elementary School, um, then we have, have to hire more staff in order to comply with the, um, class size amendment.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So this is Michael Cox, uh, my question is to the staff, does anybody know when Moon Lake Road is slated to be widened? I mean, we acquired the right of way for that road back when I was on the commission.
I'm not sure if there's somebody on staff that can answer that.
I believe Essam is on the line.
Okay.
Let's see if he's calling.
He, I believe he's a caller.
Do we know what is, uh, prefixes? There you go, prefix.
It should be eight one three.
I'm, I'm hoping we can provide that answer, it might help, um.
I can, I, I think I know the answer until Essam gets on the line. The, the county did do some interim safety improvements in Moon Lake Road, probably, I wanna say a couple of years ago, um, shortly after there was a major traffic accident on Moon Lake Road. Um, I don't believe the county had, other than those interim safety improvements, I did not believe the county has any plans to widen Moon Lake to four lanes in the next, probably next five to ten years, um, it would likely be beyond that time period. Part of the reason for that is because, as you know, Ridge Road Extension is currently under construction. And I think the county plans on the Ridge Road Extension diverting a significant amount of traffic away from Moon Lake Road, so I think that's the reason why the widening of, of Moon Lake has been delayed. But Essam may be able to clarify more if he's on the line.
Does he not call?
Makes sense.
He's a caller, just, just, to the line, so I, I'm in there.
Okay.
I can add to what David said, which was that safety improvement was in twenty fourteen, and it consisted of adding paved shoulders, resurfacing the roadway, adding audible vibratory, uh, pavement markings, restriping, and putting a turn lane at Moon Lake and Beth Wood Avenue, and, um, putting flashers, like curb warning signs and the like. It was a pretty significant safety improvement that David's referencing, I'm reading from a, a memo from twenty fourteen, but my, my understanding is the same as David, which is the four-laning of Moon Lake was, was pushed off, yeah, because of the priority of Ridge Road Extension.
And Essam's on the, on the call now, on the line.
Okay. Essam, are you there?
Go ahead.
Essam, are you there? Can you hear me now?
Where's eight one three, uh, I have an eight one three and eight five oh.
Um, yeah, eight one three should be, um, okay, we're having some technical difficulties having him on the call.
Well, I don't think his answer is gonna be any different than my answer, and Barbara's just gonna be on.
Uh, you've answered the question, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thanks David. Okay, um, so, we've heard from the, uh, caller in, and so Barbara, what comments do you have in regard to that?
Sure, and I have my technical team available too, if you have any specific questions. But, you know, as Mr. Poole asked the question, I think this is about access management and the turn lanes. Um, Coronado Way, which, which the caller has concern regarding does not have a protected left, so when you're turning left onto Coronado Way, you're in the travel lane, I think that's why it's so important, and was pointed out in our preliminary access management analysis, that we need to have that protected left. So our, people turning into our townhome project will move out of the travel lane and be in the, the turn lane. The turn lane is going to be four hundred and fifty-five feet, um, long, so sufficient to hold those cars and address that concern. The, we went through timing and phasing analysis, um, we'll be paying mobility fees, we, um, the land use is res six, we haven't asked for a land use change, usually townhomes come in around nine units per acre, we're at six units per acre. The site was previously approved for three hundred and four rental apartments, you've heard about the PUD and the expiration of PUD. And so with that, we, we have to obviously address environmental impacts, we have permitting we have to go through, listed species, and wetlands, and swift mud, and those types of things. We did notice, as required by, uh, county requirements, we actually had to send out letters twice, cuz there was a glitch in the, in how we described, um, the rezoning because of the expiration of the PUD. So, but if you have any specific questions, I have a full team available, um, that can go into more detail.
Hey, this is Peter Hansel.
Forty-five acres, how many, uh, how many acres are gonna be impacted by the actual homes, roads, and such?
I can bring forward, uh, if you could bring forward Jeremy Couch, he can, he's our project engineer, and I can see he's on somewhere here, so.
Alright.
He can answer that question.
Jeremy, are you there?
I, I am here, Mr. Gray, thank you, um, I, I believe it's approximately twenty-five acres of uplands.
Jeremy, we need to swear you in first, please, so state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Jeremy Couch, one seven nine three seven Hunting Bow Circle, Lutz, three three five five eight.
Okay, the clerk will now swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Alright, thank you Jeremy, go ahead.
Sir, uh, it's approximately twenty-five acres of uplands, we're still going through our delineation with swift mud at this time. But essentially, the uplands are centered into the middle of the property, and there is a wetland area on the north, um, south, and east that buffer the project, um, from the surrounding area, so it's, it's a nice little enclave tucked into, in the, in the middle of this tract.
So it looks like about half of the property is gonna remain, uh, forested, right?
Yes, sir, that's accurate.
Okay. I think that was one of the questions that were, that the caller had, was the environmental part of it, so. Okay, we're, yeah, that, that's, answer that question, Peter, did you have a question?
It was the same of yours, they have one hundred and sixty-two townhomes, forty-five point, uh, three, tenths of an acre, I figured out, R six, they could put a hundred and seventy-four townhomes in there, so they're going less, yeah. Your, your question was basically the same as mine.
Okay.
But my, my main concern is that's, all that's going in here is the townhomes, I thought Ms. Whitley had mentioned something else about apartments, I have apartments on a note, that I wrote down, it, is anything else going in this hun- forty-five point oh three tenths of an acre?
Yeah, so my reference was to the previous approval, uh, Mr. Hansel, previously, the previous PUD approval would have allowed, um, three hundred and
Okay, thank you.
For rental apartments.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anybody else?
Well, I just wanna clarify, this is a Euclidean zoning, so it doesn't necessarily restrict the property to townhomes. It's a multi-family zoning.
Multi-family, yeah, in this case, I understand they're gonna be attached. Right?
Yeah, that's what the applicant proposed, I just didn't want you to think that was a binding commitment.
Right, gotcha, gotcha.
Cuz it's a Euclidean zoning district.
Okay, thank, thank you. Alright, any other questions from any board member? Alright, if not, uh, we have a motion.
This is Peter Hansel, I like the motion to approve, uh, sorry, I don't have the number here.
PC four?
Yeah, PC four, thank you.
Jamie Girardi on second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve PC four with conditions, and second.
Be clear, PC, yeah, there, Mr. Chair, there are no conditions, it's not a conditional resort.
So any further discussion? All in favor? Call call?
Jamie Girardi?
Hi.
Michael Cox?
Hi.
Peter Hansel?
Hi.
Roberto Sais?
Hi.
Christopher Poole?
Hi.
Chris Williams?
Hi.
Chairman Charles Gray?
Hi.
That was the last item, um, and I just wanted to mention that the June eighteenth Planning Commission will also be a virtual meeting, so we'll see you next time, um, for the same.
Move to adjourn, Michael Cox.
Chair, you're muted.
Second, Chris Williams.
I think the chair may have left or muted.
The chair is muted.
Mr. Vice Chair, you wanna adjourn the meeting, please?
Yeah, I guess all in favor?
Alright.
We're outta here, bye.
I hit the wrong.
Thank you.